Before we get started with the meeting, I'd like to read a statement. On March 13, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued governmental operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct a telephonic open meeting thereafter and of its intent to permit the public to make comment at the meeting by telephone. Four trustees have elected to participate in this meeting by telephone, Dr. Patrick, Ms. Ayala, Dr. Morrison, and Dr. Evans. Each will state his or her name before making any comments during the meeting, each and every time. We do have one member of the public who wants to make a comment, and she has been asked to address the board telephonically during the public comment portion of the meeting. She will be called and placed on a speaker so that all participants in the meeting can hear her remarks. Reemphasize, a trustee participating by phone really does have to state his or her name each and every time before speaking. I'll now do a quorum call, since we can't see you, and please reply with an "aye."
...his or her name before making any comments during the meeting, each and every time. We do have one member of the public who wants to make a comment, and she has been asked to address the board telephonically during the public comment portion.
Here. Dr. Morrison.
Here.
And Mr. Greenhill.
Present.
And Ken Barr.
Present.
And Conrad Heed is present. Having a quorum, we will now call the meeting to order, the March 19 monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District. Public comment.
Yes, we have Julie Murphy.
Julie, would you please state your name and the city you reside in?
Actually, they're talking to you, Ian. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm sorry, I disagree on my end. My name is Ian Pearce. I'm a resident of Arlington, Texas. I'm currently an educator in Arlington, NACD, and my wife is actually a former library employee of the TCC South Campus. So, and we're both former students. So, I was a little concerned when I saw the news that although teachers and students weren't being required to attend, come to school, come to the campus, that other staff members were. I really think in the safety of everyone that TCC should employ a full shutdown, shut down as many people as possible, nonessential staff as a set, nonessential function of the campus if classes aren't taking place, then I think we're needlessly putting workers at risk. I know that if my wife was still employed by TCC, I would not want her going to work, not only for her safety, but for the safety of my parents, her parents, and our friends and family that are immunocompromised. And so, I really just would urge that TCC take the time to consider this decision and shut down the campus in full and not require staff members to come to work when even the governor is asking that all businesses, essentially nonessential businesses, shut down.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We have two public comments that Carol Bracken will read because the people decided to do this at more than arm's length.
Good evening, President Heed, members of the board, Chancellor Giavignini. We have received a statement from the Immigration Action Team, which is a subcommittee of the organization United Fort Worth. They've asked that we present this to you for your consideration. In response to the recent proposed ending of DACA by SCOTUS, the Immigration Action Team proposes that TCCD adopt extended measures to ensure the protection of its DACA recipients, students, and employees. The Coalition of ICE Out of Tarrant recognizes and appreciates the efforts that the TCC Board of Directors is implementing to ensure its students, staff, and faculty are safe during the COVID-19 pandemic. However, the federal government has given no indication as to whether they will be extending their decision on dissolving the DACA program or not, so we must assume that SCOTUS is still remaining on schedule with their decision for this summer. With that in mind, the Coalition ICE Out of Tarrant must remain adamant as to what it demands of the Tarrant County College District in regards to creating an undocumented student-friendly campus. Such demands include the following: not allowing immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, officers onto campus without a warrant, the refusal of campus police to enforce immigration law, not sharing student-faculty-staff immigration status with ICE, not gathering information on immigration citizenship status, providing confidential legal support to students, faculty, and staff with immigration law questions and issues, reducing the deployment of campus police to protests that seek to include undocumented students and workers to avoid intimidation of undocumented activists. Let us always keep in mind that the correct time to do what is correct doesn't always have to be subject to a pandemic such as COVID-19. The undocumented students, faculty, and staff of TCCD's livelihood in this nation will still be under threat even after the pandemic subsides. The following is the resolution that they have requested you consider. Whereas TCCD ought to announce in a public statement that there's support of the continuation of the DACA program, whereas TCCD ought to announce in a public statement their support of House Resolutions 6 and 1998. To wit, H.R. 6, American Dream and Promise Act of 2019, will prevent the removal of certain aliens who entered the United States as minors and grant such aliens conditional permanent residence status for 10 years. This bill will provide for procedures to apply for conditional permanent residence for aliens who received DACA and have not been disqualified from DACA. House Resolution 6 protects law-abiding DACA recipients from deportation and allows them to apply for permanent residency. House Resolution 1998, Protect Dreamer Confidentiality Act, will prevent the Department of Homeland Security from disclosing information from DACA applicants to Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, or Customs and Border Protection, CBP, except only in the case to prosecute a felony not related to immigration status. House Resolution 1998 prevents ICE and CBP from targeting DACA recipients for deportation if the program is terminated, whereas the TCCD Board of Trustees ought to lobby on behalf of their DACA recipient population to local Congress representatives and demand that they support House Resolutions 6 and 1998. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3 on the agenda, Board Business Items and Announcements. Item A, Approval of Work Session Meeting Minutes of February 13, 2020. Entertain a motion.
Bill Greenhill makes a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Greenhill.
Michael Evans, second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Sorry, Michael. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, Approval of Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes for February 20, 2020.
So moved, Bill Greenhill.
Motion by Mr. Greenhill. Second by?
Second, Diane Patrick.
Dr. Patrick. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Gwen Morrison.
Aye, Teresa Ayala.
Aye, Michael Evans.
Aye.
I think the ayes are in favor. The motion carries. Item 4, Consideration Approval of the Consent Agenda. And I'll read each item. A is consideration approval of Texas Association of School Boards, that's TASB, Localized Policy Manual Update 37. Item B, Consideration Approval of Resolution Authorizing Criteria to Compile Board Meeting Agendas. Item C, Consideration and Approval of Deductive Change Order for Johnson Controls Fire Protection for Fire Sprinkler Upgrades at South Automotive and South Auto Collision Repair in the amount of a credit of $196,443.14. Item D is consideration approval of deductive change order with Freedom Construction for sprinkler installation at the Northeast Fine Arts Building, credit in the amount of $32,599. Entertain a motion? Motion by Kenneth Barr.
Michael Evans, second.
Second by Dr. Evans. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, Gwen Morrison.
Aye, Teresa Ayala.
Aye, Michael Evans.
Aye, Diane Patrick.
Motion carries. Okay. Individual, item 5, Consideration and Approval of Individual Action Items. A is the consideration and approval of contracts with multiple vendors for cooling tower replacement on Southeast Campus in the amount, collective amount of $572,343.97, and that involves contracts with Environmental System and Texas Air System. Is there any discussion, comments?
Michael Evans, so moved.
Okay. Dr. Evans.
Gwen Morrison, second.
Who is that, second? Dr. Morrison, second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, Consideration Approval of Professional Services Authorization with Perkins Plus Will of Southeast Campus Expansion Programming and Conceptual Design, the amount of $269,780. Ms. Alanis?
This is the preliminary work associated with the design of the Southeast Campus Expansion and will be followed in the future with a full design contract.
Any comments, discussion? Motion for approval by Kenneth Barr.
Second by Bill Greenhill.
Bill Greenhill, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, Gwen Morrison.
We think motion carries. Item C, Consideration Approval of Contracts with Multiple Service Providers for Air System Replacements Phase 2 at the Hermacy-Johnson-Hadley Center of Excellence in the amount of $1,632,217.76 not to exceed. And this will involve five contractors, Trevino Group is the general contractor, TD Industries Mechanical, TD Industries Electrical, Environmental Control, and Texas Air System.
I think you explained it.
Second, Michael Evans.
Teresa, oh.
Is there any question or discussion? Okay. Motion for approval by Kenneth Barr, second by Dr. Evans. Item D.
We've got approved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, Gwen Morrison.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, Consideration Approval of Contract with Freedom Construction for the Avionics Relocation Project in the Hermacy-Johnson-Hadley Northwest Center of Excellence for Aviation, Transportation, and Logistics Building in the amount of $315,823.25.
This board previously authorized a new degree program in nondestructive testing and nondestructive inspection, and that requires a move of the avionics program at that facility, and this accomplishes that.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Greenhill, second by Kenneth Barr. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, Teresa Ayala.
Aye, Gwen Morrison.
Aye, Diane Patrick.
Me, Michael Evans.
Thank you. Item E, Consideration and Approval of Contract with Chambers Engineering for the demolition of the Rotunda Building on South Campus in the amount of $450,932.43.
Yes, this will remove the 1973 building that is beyond its useful life, and the space will be restored to open space.
Questions, discussion? Motion by Kenneth Barr, second by Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, Michael Evans.
Aye, Gwen Morrison.
Aye, Diane Patrick.
Aye, Teresa Ayala.
Are there any ayes? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, Consideration and Approval of Multiple Contracts with Facilities Programming Limited for Classroom Utilization Studies at Northeast, South, and Trinity River Campus Locations in the amount of $162,810. This will include item 1, Facilities Programming on Northeast, item 2, Facilities Program on South, item 3, Facilities Program on Trinity River.
So, this is a continuation of the work that started with Northwest and Southeast with this firm to do an analysis of the utilization and capacity of each of the classroom spaces. It's in preparation for the delivery of the bond program, and these contracts continue that work.
Questions, discussion?
Michael Evans moved to approve.
Motion for approval of Dr. Evans.
Teresa Ayala, second.
Second by? Second by Ms. Yalla. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, Michael Evans.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Aye, Teresa Yalla.
Aye, Diane Patrick.
Motion carries. Item G, Dr. Peter Jordan, consideration and approval of contract with the University of North Texas Health Science Center to provide medical director services for the district in the amount of $102,081. Dr. Jordan.
This is a requirement that permits our in-staff across the college to perform urgent and emergent care in accordance with established standing delegation orders.
Questions, discussion?
Move to approve, Michael Evans.
Motion for approval by Dr. Evans. Second by?
Bill Greenhill.
Bill Greenhill. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Michael Evans.
Aye, Gwen Morrison.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye, Diane Patrick. Aye, Teresa Yalla.
Item H, Dr. LeBlanc, consideration and approval of contract with Catholic Charities of Fort Worth to expand the Stay the Course Program with the district in a projected amount of $3,494,000.
Yes, sir. This is over a four-year period, and TCC would pay 35% of the actual expenditures, with Catholic Charities paying the rest.
Entertain a motion?
I move.
Move to approve, Michael Evans.
Move to approve by Dr. Evans. Second by Kenneth Barr. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, Michael Evans.
Thank you.
Aye, Gwen Morrison.
Any opposed?
Aye, Diane Patrick.
Any opposed?
Aye, Teresa Yalla.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, consideration approval of the creation of the 2019 Board Program Fund 90, consolidation of Renewal and Replacement Fund 40, and Building Fund 70, and a resolution increasing the adopted Tarrant County College District Fiscal Year 2019-2020 budget. Ms. Alanese?
So this is intended to set the administrative framework as we prepare for the bond program and the first debt issue this summer, and it does a couple of things. It sets up the 2019 Bond Program Fund 90, so we'll be able to aggregate all of the expenses and debt proceeds into a singular place and track that program. In addition, it is consolidating both the Building Fund as well as the Renewal and Replacement Fund, which have historically been used for capital programming, and that way at the end we'll end up with essentially a debt program and a cash-funded capital program, and so it'll end some of the ambiguity around that. And we will also be setting up, doing the initial appropriation of the Bond Program Fund of $40 million. The intent is for us to move expenditures for some of the pre-programming that we've done and started implementing projects that will be reimbursed from the debt program or debt issue this summer, and so it gives us the budget authority to do that and to move those expenses into that new fund.
Okay, questions, discussion?
Move to approve, Michael Evans.
Motion for approval.
Second, Teresa Yalla.
Second, Ms. Yalla. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, Michael Evans.
Aye, Teresa Yalla.
Aye, Diane Patrick.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item J, consideration approval of a resolution to transfer the May Owen Naming Designation to the forthcoming boardroom in the Clear Fork Wing of the Trinity River Complex. Dr. Gemaniti.
Thank you. Mr. Heed, as a point of reference, back in September of 1982, the building we're sitting in was new, and at that time, the Board of Trustees of the college named that building the May Owen District Center, and that's what it's been since 1982, in honor of one of the board's founding members, Dr. May Owen. And since that time, the May Owen name, if you will, has become synonymous with the location of TCC's Board of Trustees and the work that they've done every month. Therefore, we are recommending to honor that historical spirit by a resolution to transfer the May Owen Naming Designation to the forthcoming boardroom being constructed in the Clear Fork, in the Clear Fork Wing of the Trinity River Campus.
Questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a great idea, and I move approval.
Motion for approval by Kenneth Barr.
I second.
Michael Evans, second.
Second by Bill Greenhill. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, Michael Evans.
Aye, Gwen Morrison.
Aye, Diane Patrick.
Aye, Teresa Yalla.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5K, consideration and approval of a resolution granting the Chancellor temporary authority until July 1st, 2020, to enact rules and procedures as necessary and appropriate to combat the spread of COVID-19. Ms. Bracken.
Federal, state and local governments have declared a state of emergency in their efforts to address the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus, and a robust response by the district may require operational adjustments that are different from the standard policies established by the Board of Trustees in order to facilitate a flexible and timely response to changing conditions. The board is asked to grant temporary authority to the Chancellor until July 1st, 2020 to establish rules and procedures he deems necessary and advisable. However, the Chancellor will report to the Board of Trustees about all such rules and procedures at the next meeting of the Board of Trustees occurring after July 1st, 2020.
Questions, discussion?
Just, this is Diane Patrick, just for point of clarification, you just said following July, we were seeing the report of what the Chancellor did would be done all at one time then, or each month as we go along?
The suggestion was that we would do it at the, at the end of that period, but we could certainly report more frequently if that was the board's desire.
Would there be any objection or reason not just to report at the next monthly meeting what had occurred the month before?
That would be fine, and I was also going to mention that any procurement authority that's exercised that following month, we would come back and ratify those decisions.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah, this is Michael Evans. I'm agreeing with Dr. Patrick on that. That's fine.
Any other questions?
So do we need to have an amendment? This is Gwen Morrison. Should there be an amendment to that motion, or? So that the record clearly reflects that the report would be made at the following board meeting?
Okay.
The resolution could be amended to say that with monthly reports during the pendency of, during the pendency of the authority.
Okay. Let's include that amendment?
That would be, that would be my amendment, yes, and Gwen's too.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval with the modification that the board would get monthly reports.
Okay, motion to approve the amended.
Second, Michael Evans.
By Kenneth Barr, and second by who?
Evans.
Dr. Evans, thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, Michael Evans.
Aye, Gwen Morrison.
Aye, Diane Patrick. Aye, Teresa Yalla.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I would like to mention to our audience, if we have an audience other than the folks here, and I hope we do, that we have considered all of these items in great detail in our work session a couple of weeks ago, so when it seems like we're going through these rather rapidly, it's because we've already had a lot of discussion on every single one of them, and this is just the, and no action was taken at the work session, so this is our opportunity to make those approvals. Next is the monthly financial report. Ms. Alanese?
Yes, so you have a summary in your packet that shows you that we are at 85% of our income for the year, which is typical, because we receive our tax receipts at the beginning of the year and have received the majority of our tuition at this point. We're halfway through the year, and the expenses are on target with that, so no concerns at this time. Any questions?
Any questions, discussion? Thank you.
Okay. Move on to the investment?
Go ahead.
Okay. So we basically have, at this time of year, again with the cash on hand, increased our investment holdings. We've got a yield as of the end of February of 1.82. Obviously, that may look a little bit different after, after this month, but we have a weighted average maturity of 371 days, and as you are probably aware, these are invested very conservatively, and so some of the turbulence in the market recently, we don't anticipate big challenges with.
In what direction do you think the yield is going?
You don't have to answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellors' Report.
Yes, Mr. Heed, due to the nature of the context and how we're meeting this evening, we really don't have anything to, to share with you related to college celebrations, if you will, or new staff introductions. The college accolades, as well as recent articles, do appear in your materials, so you do have those, so thank you.
Okay, we will now, the TCC Board will now conduct a closed meeting as authorized by Section 551 of the Texas Government Code in order to A, seek the advice of its attorneys, B, deliberate real property matters, C, deliberate personnel matters, or D, deliberate security devices or security audits. The Board will reconvene after the closed session. The board will reconvene after the closed session.
Okay, we are now reconvening and I'll entertain a motion for dismissal.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Green Hill, second by Ken Barr, third by Ken Barr. All in favor to adjourn, aye?
Aye.
Michael Epstein.
And he opposed.
I am for aye.
Teresa Yala.
Okay, then motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.
All y'all take care.
Thank you.